Chao!
Chao!
Rest in peace.
Happy Birthday! Happy Birthday! Happy Birthday!
Action!
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 Happy Birthday!
Let's live, let's live! We live!
We live!
Our leaders were built for power. We are born to protect. And we are against our friends. For all them, I've won them. I've won them in a battle. Force and struggle, we live. I love you. I love the people here. My brother, my brother, you're not alone. I'm not alone. I'm the one. I want them to stand up to run out the country by hand. Happy Birthday! Happy Birthday! Have a good day! Happy Birthday! Let's go, let's go! Let's have a good show. You can't stop us, I'm gonna fight. Let me out. I can't do the present. I know that, how many of you have been down the street and now don't have one on this? Let's hope we can rise up over you. By some of you probably back up. Happy Birthday! Happy Birthday! Happy Birthday! Have a good day! Have a joy! Have a joy! Happy Birthday! Happy Birthday! Happy Birthday! Happy Birthday! Happy Birthday! Happy Birthday!
Last time, the president came, he didn't even have a gun. When he came, he was a little bit angry. But he was very strong. Yeah, guys. He was very strong. He was the president of the country. Happy Birthday!
Happy Birthday!
Our leaders will be victorious. Our soldiers will be victorious. Our soldiers will be victorious. Oh, oh, yeah! Our soldiers will be victorious. God bless you. We live! I love you. The glory of the future. We can see the path. I love the future. It's a kind of dream. We live, we live, we live!
Happy Birthday! Happy Birthday! Happy Birthday! Have a good day! Ever? Now, now, really. While we're taking the national anthem, too, before we sit down. We are patriotic citizens. That is what we should special. Thank you very much. Peace and...
Our right to our own. Nigeria has followed it. Since the start of our land. In the first place. The day of our youth has come. Never be defeated. So, so, without a mind. What is your body? Freedom, peace and unity.
Happy Birthday!
Action!
Happy Birthday! Thank you very much. You can be an athlete. Now... Quickly, before, um... Okay, now, before we start doing, um... We'd like to please get some, uh, to recognize, um, some great special personalities of this town. Give a round of applause for ourselves, please. Come on, give us the applause. Really, for our tenacity, for our patience, really, and for our resilience. God bless us, come on. We're wasting too much time now. Uh, we'll be recognizing some people here.
And with a clubbing of emotions, we'd like to invite to the item of our, Dr. Ogun Yemi from the Department of History and International Relations.
We'd like to give a round of applause for him. Give him a round of applause. Thank you very much, sir. You're welcome, sir.
We also have, in our meeting, this absolute professor, Terry Becker, from the Faculty of Art, Culture, Arts and Executives. Give him a round of applause, please. We also have Dr. from the Faculty of Art. Give a round of applause for him.
Okay, we also have Dr. Okatia, from History and International Relations Department. Please put your hands together.
From the Department of Mathematics, we have Professor Akiola. A round of applause for him, please.
And also, uh, we have, uh, the TSA, or the Department of the TSA, Professor Manosu. Give a round of applause for him. There's our actor. Happy Birthday! We'll be putting sign off, and we are now, who are they coming? Once again, we really serve the South African community, the African. So, we're wasting too much time now.
We'd like to take the opening remarks and the inaugural speech. Also, the welcome notes, and this is going to be taken by Comrade Swaya Olufun. A round of applause for him, please, and come to take the opening. Comrade Swaya Olufun, Comrade Swaya Olufun, please. Opening remarks. Thank you very much.
Happy Birthday! Happy Birthday! Have a million happy birthday! Do you know ever since the time I learnt that a white man chased out with sticks? Was a great affair that chased out fifteen convoys of anti-bomb squad out of the campus? And that kind of great affair was not a great affair that anybody could chase out with mere sticks as if they were chasing dogs? So, and I want to believe... I want to believe that kind of great affair is still alive. And the kind of great affair, I know, respects their dignity, respects their tenacity, to answer their resounding questions, not while they are sitting down, or when they are faced up and their legs on the... To... Turn. Trace. Boom, boom! Happy Birthday! Happy Birthday! Say, 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 say. We are students, though. If we don't want us are sitting down. I know she'll be there from UNTech, or maybe from Uvasa, but the real people we just met are the real great affair students. Because in our anthem, it says clearly, "A new target of the job." Well, and that amounts for the reason, the verse here, we are in the Medina of struggle and Jerusalem of freedom. Yes, exactly the reason. And the fact program of the show at the campus, there was, let me start, let me start first, by welcoming you to an inaugural session of the show at the campus activity. The show at the campus is a delicate fact structure of campus analysis now. I meant both for us, that we are in all the two zones in India, all of the systems, but it was deliberate. It was what? Deliberate to a constant of Panorama University, aka of Panorama University, as a starting point of these events. And the reason for this, it is not because of your intellectual masterpieces, definitely not. It is not necessarily because we are the most intelligent, but because, the reason is just one reason. It is due to that great affair and the history of fighting oppression. And for the 2019 election, it's not for the business as usual. It is to, as a rationalist activist, we have three pieces to power. Three pieces to power. They are the parliaments. Oh, wow, technology. Now, we have three pieces to power as crucial layers of the society. We have the parliaments, and we've been doing for the past fifty-eight years of great service to India. The second piece is the balance, which is going to be witches, the stage we are at just now. Because we know fully well, that no individuals are criminals. They are the people who are not even able to follow their love. But for now, we are going to expose that same law of balance we created. But the third piece, you will find out what it does to you, by the time we chase them out of power, and let me do this. Okay, uh, not to take too much of our time. Not to take too much of our time. One of the major reasons, and many reasons. The comment, our opinion, and our movements, as in these majorly our young people, is the first, we feel that young people would expect things was that what they defined as we have here today. That's what they want, the generation of the show of us, that want to democracy, we have to get our best civilian and dictatorship anyway. Nevertheless, these young persons are the most exhaustive in our nineteen years democracy. Or maybe you could just simply call it religious dictatorship, because that is exactly what it is. So, if anyone of us, if anybody tells us that as young people, we were being exhaustive on our love to that job of power. I want to repeat and tell them, that insults is when they are paying their parents eighteen thousand million one week, and the police administration want to increase their fees to five hundred thousand naira. Insults is when they can't escape, you know, you like it. It's like a extreme pay as much as thirteen thousand five million naira, and our professors are not giving any of them to five hundred thousand naira. Insults! Insults! Is when the police department subjected to the death sentence, they probably use OETSC or UCH. But while he asked the F1 to spend ten million naira on itself in a London of witches. That's ten million naira that used by the authorities in India. So, let me tell you something. Maybe it's something they have been, they have been too small. It looks like Vietnam, for all politicians, are hung. They hang them. That is what they do in Vietnam. Because they are responsible for thousands of streets on the road, and the death penalty is far from our mission. And second is, because as young people, both in our schools and in religious centers, we have gained that a remarkable passion of our morality. But I'm also sure, that this kind of the people we have met and used us, and as you will understand, they say, "Oh, do you know about the Parleton?" We just want to learn about the Parleton. Our policy and our movement, it is not a movement to librate just your private people in India. As you already know, it is for African National Congress. It is a movement to librate all African, both as old and diaspora. And that is why the major ambition of the twenty-eightiest movement's top structure is question as well, for in a period of ten years, we are able to, we are able to elect structures and ideas of our movement, not just within Africa, you know, but I thought that the entire world. If you are in chaos. If you are in chaos, that we cannot ease, then go and take the beauty of the progress of the movement at the past. The movement is getting several months, and we can build our membership everywhere across the world. The party is getting too much, and we can build our membership everywhere in the world. We are doing it like this, we are doing the party, we are doing movement, that is pretty difficult, the young players have been waiting for a very long time, and the process of the emotional politics, to overcome these years of solitude. Now, you knew us as activists, and yes, we are still activists, but it's now time to come and to, to, to move from the bad case, to move to a stronger, free education, the struggle for free education, all of us, all those, and in this way, we are now moving into a stronger, political power. And with this, everything we have been fighting for, for the past fifty-eight years, if Nigeria's make the right shop, we'll have the ability to define everything with words for. Let me say aside. Let me say aside, by reminding you something, that the road to revolution, the road to freedom, is watered by the sweat, pain, and anguish of the religion. And of course, it is colored by the blood of our fallen meteors. And that means, let me say aside by saying, "As we do not continue." Thank you, man!
Thank you very much. Um, that was a very wonderful one, Comrade Yomi. So, we're wasting too much time, really, I cannot overintroduce our story, we are, um, due to the, the time now. Uh, I will bring in on, uh, a man of Hattor, as I like to call him, as a little figure, uh, in the political history of this country. Uh, he's going to be talking on this speaker and political antecedent of, of Mayelie Tore. And I'm talking about that person, and Mr. Langre, I believe he also understands that person. Uh, deep inside, I would go to read, uh, I would go to program.
Forever! Solidarity forever! Solidarity forever! We shall always fight for our rights. We will fight for our rights. Solidarity, we fight for our rights. Solidarity, we fight for our rights. Solidarity, we fight for our rights.
We live! We live! We live, we live! Scientifically, I do talk, and your agency. We live! We live! We live, we live! Birthday, dear friend!
Yes!
Happy Birthday, dear friend!
Happy Birthday!
Have a good day!
Have a good day!
Have a good day! When Ross was speaking while ago, and he mentioned something, perhaps he gets it right. He said, "This is the Jerusalem of radicals, the maker of militants. It is not an accident, it's a passion." And I'm not disappointed. I'm not disappointed after twenty years, that we helped through, in control of human relations, what I'm seeing now, especially when I know that no one legitimate, and the consciousness is still this high. It means we cannot kill. Birthday, dear friend!
Yes!
As I said, we're going. We've been planning that we want good leadership. We want people that represent us very well. We want individuals who have the love of the cities area at heart. People who not just think about themselves, but will think about the country. People who will make the blind man to have confidence in itself, rather than think he has a genetic problem. And that's the kind of leadership we aspire. And I'm challenging you all, not see that as a force, for every one thousand miles of a journey starts with a step. And that's what we are doing today. I bring to you a friend, a comrade, that I have known by the back for over twenty years. Someone who to whom I stand shoulder to shoulder, even when we're fighting drums at us. Someone who will be ready to stand in detention, people for our own cause, when we're fighting as trouble, not that of your life. And that's why I feel today that no matter whatever I'm doing, if it is coming to even, I'll be part of that. Birthday, dear friend!
Yes!
It's not an accident that we have chosen even as an activist. That's a show, everybody knows it, we all do it. But we have to keep on moving forward. And that's why I keep on telling people that despite the fact that we have a democracy at hand, what is going on is even worse than what we have in the military. And that's why we have a president who's so shameless, bringing up a certificate. And of course... No, maybe you are forty, maybe you are forty, and you are forty with good memory. Birthday, friend!
Yes!
You know I'm not a great organization, apart from my first set. It's my heart, it's mine. So, it's all painful, it's all painful when you know that our success is hopeless, was not upon the next one I see. And someone explaining, so I can see what I was from my... And you know it's funny, you tell the man on the deck, it is why a foreign land, where people really respect themselves, and a symbol of honor, that ignores the comfort of his imagination. But we'll talk about that later. Birthday, dear friend! I want to look at the historical and political assistance of Omwelie Tore. There's someone present in the University of Lagos, but beyond that, several other persons were present from the other. He had a revolutionary circle. He was not only committed to the struggle of the United. I remember the very first time we had issues together facing the police. It was about the time we had some others, but that particular one, I remember maybe, and talked about eighteen January nineteen ninety-nine. We then had a vice chancellor, the head of Professor Wally. And just because the visitor who wants the jet class standing in front of you to be president of the student union, I was proud of student union record. And they have given us, to go and get an injunction, by removing from contesting the office of the president of student union. But they have a prayer right now, William. When that letter came, the judicial council sat on it, and said, "One, from Swallow, you don't have the open stand to go and get an injunction, when it's not a level of student union." "No, you have to protest." "Secondly, the court with which you got that injunction, the decision is not breaking on the student union." Birthday, dear friend! Kolo, kolo! People will be taking away light.
I love that, I love you! I love that, I love you! I love you, I love you! I love that, I love you! I love that, I love you! I love that, I love you! I love you, I love you! I love that, I love you! I love that, I love you! I love that, I love you! I love you, I love you! I love that, I love you! I love that, I love you! I love that, I love you! I love you, I love you! I love that, 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 I love you!
Birthday, dear friend!
Yes!
I'm going to have a generator that is working. As I was saying... The first act of God and Jotun, the judicial council have to trigger it, on the basis that you cannot get a statement, if you are a student and you're a part of the union, to have been a different case. After that, I was allowed to contest for the office of the student union president. And you know what it is? In the one election, he said in silence, and said, "You were not recognized in the S.A.C., that central executive house." That means the president and the executives not been recognized. Same day, just about twenty-four hours after one election, he came up with that. In the one election in nineteen eighty-eight, he said in silence, and said, "For five hundred and ninety naira, the introduction of this, to ten thousand naira, for a college debt, for fresh debt, twenty thousand naira." And people had some persons, sponsors, to tell them that, let's say, a person is not from the United States, they say, "Students were in full years, they were looking at it for that one, they will ask us to pay for it." But we should check the ground of the fight, from even, down to Lagos, press conference in Lagos, rallies in Lagos. I remember the day, Commissioner of Police, the person of Agaro, Sunday Agaro, who was once the Commissioner of Police in the Shushu place, when I was being kidnapped under a machete, but they escaped to Maroon. The mouse, people are trying to come in to Lagos a day, why do you want to have...
Great success! Great success! Let me tell you, uh, just one thing. You see, this struggle is not for the chicken as it. This struggle is not for chickens. I'm telling you. Uh, you know, do you want to say something here? And if you're not there, you don't understand. But you go on another way, bro. As a matter of correction, my name is Ayew, Danala Oluwale. I'm contesting for House of Assembe, representing Atangosha Eastern West constituency. The movement is strong. It is the time that we will take it back. And, and let, let me tell you, let me tell you what we are going to do. When we take it back, we'll make it difficult for any too big humanity to protest against us. I'm telling you, we will raise the standard in such a way that if anybody is not up to the standard, they will fall by the wind. I'm telling you. I am in one round campaign. Look, if you are selfish, you will not be able to help Nigeria. I'm telling you, because if you enter first time, where you're supposed to do good stuff, you won't spend the first time appeasing what you call the gods of your party. That is stupid thing to do. I did not go to this school, but I respect everybody from this school, I went to First of All. When we do, when we do our president, we use one year and we achieve, don't we? In one year, as executive president, you will do everything that you promise. This is my advice for us. Look, don't let anybody tell you that we will not take it back. Our next president in this country is Omoayi Uchore.
Thank you, Dan. Um, I have now the presence of Mr. Kitaio Olalou, representative of TIB, is contesting office. Have you noticed yourself? I just put your hand on me, thank you, thank you. I don't know what's going on here. Okay, I want to recognize, uh, the state portrait of TIB, the TIB government is, uh, the head of TIB entire establishment. Uh, that is the person of Mr. Olubite Afolabi. Mr. Afolabi is wanting to head, uh, some of the events in the state like this. Is he here? Okay, alright, alright. I recognize, uh, Olubite Sitiro, the economic control of the debate moment. Thank you so much for being here, Ayew, thank you. Uh, next, I want to recognize the union leaders of this place institution. Uh, representative of Sanu, I believe you guys are here, Sanu members, if you have any representative, please just recognize your presence. Okay, thank you, Mr. Thank you, appreciate your coming. And then the presentation from Nasu. Nasu, Nasu, are you here? Is standing at the very beginning here from Nasu? Thank you, thank you, thank you for coming, appreciate your presence. Uh, next is Asu. Asu members, we recognize you, thank you, thank you, Asu members. Alright, all the members of Fungwa, want to recognize your presence. Fungwa members, thank you for coming, appreciate you. For attending by the doors, uh, we really appreciate your coming, thank you so much, thank you. Okay, uh, without wasting much time, the next item of the feast. I think I have a short thing doing, I love the two people of, uh, both of us are presenting, thank you so much.
What is Nigeria's goal, to start to, to set up what is our best goal? It is. It is, it is in a sense that we can have. From every aspect, leadership has proved a function. So hard to prove. I can't believe that show back over there, but you like it. To know. Through leadership again. That will get me in every level of crisis. So, uh, look, I'm going to speak right. Look, I'm going to give them an everlasting reason that yes, we feel responsible. When each other at best at the last minute to make things right. I've been cheating myself outside this country. Let those who care, I think, more responsibility, you know, they can meet in six months. It was not six months. If our wishes for all these institutions are in India, we are feeling generous to everybody, please. To win one more person for this country, lucky. For all your companies, we will help you, let us, to put all our blood, to repair this country, is nothing. And then, so then, start to rising with all that you guys try. Make I do. Nigerian show, we are very sorry for the hardship and wish we were a part of you. We are giving regret in the first place, I'm giving regret because I'm too proud to run. But in this last bring light, this is what I'm going to do. There's no future in the world. Just all that, maybe I will story, just take it back to Nigeria, keep it back to Nigeria. Give it up. All the schools, all the precious schools, read all the precious schools, it better than the Bible students. Don't ask like us, they can eat, with computers, learn, the precious. Let, let the people with the schools in line, they will be learned. The people with the schools will be learned. Let the contact go, be proud of you. Let us start to love your fantastic unit, United, with, uh, Asa, Asa Amoah.
On that, that I have said, will I mean, uh, Africa was killed, Africa wasn't killed by us as they want to believe. They killed me because they saw his future. That he had become so revolutionary and Christian in Africa, if they don't finish people like them, they will not let this political class rest. Before they did it to Africa, they tried it on me at University of Lagos, I was attacked in a similar fashion. By a militia from乞丐们, police officers, civil people, I mean, the DSS and the police officers. I survived, I was injected at University of Lagos with unknown medical sources. But I have never affected the way I saw the future. I knew that one day, we would have to confront the shindig of the political class in such a way that we put them to rest and they found it retirement. And then it's terrible in the face, and it's next year. Great difference. Next year is more Nigeria's election. Election is just a process. Next year is our place with history. Next year is our place with the revolution that has happened in this country. My next year, great difference, is the time that something has to be in this country. As you know, Frank Fana was saying, that out of creative for stories, every generation will discover this mission. Either to fulfill it or betray it. It is up to you to fulfill the mission, to free yourself from a tiny, miserable minority of very, very addicted ambition political class. Or to betray it by collecting part of the crumbs falling off their toes in what they distribute during the election time. The one who thousand naira, or what they call stolen infrastructure. The one that separates your destiny from yourself. The one that pass your soul from your conscience. You have to decide if that goes to one next year or one a country governed by you. Because no one will lie to you. The democracy we had in nineteen ninety-nine is not democracy. It's a moron democracy. There's a government of morons, by morons. And you can name them, all the morons that have been president since nineteen ninety-nine, starting from Baba Yaga. There was even a time, they imposed upon this country a dead man. For five months, Gera was dead in hospital. And they kept saying that he's remorseful. After that, they imposed upon us a man who they didn't have a PhD, but nobody could find kisses. And they came and did what the PhD of a teacher does. They came and PhD Nigeria. You know what PhD means, like a cool name down. They came and cool down the whole of Nigeria. And after that, of course, came this ancestor. Nigeria is the worst country in the world that is letting an ancestor into office. Other than ancestor, there are four years. Not only is he an ancestor, he's an ancestor of the dinosaur, you know, the one who have six legs. Yes, and you are hearing from me, these guys have nothing of theirs. But not only are they asking you to vote for him, they are also probed another ancestor. Yes, and you know, who is of the Arab, Greek and Thai. So on, they are saying to you that if the other one cannot lead you into their party motion, and this, the other one will bankrupt you. The age of these two guys combined together, the age of these two guys combined together is one hundred forty-eight years. One forty-eight years. Nigeria is fifty-eight years ago. We have forced a country to themselves to be most good for people who are almost twice the age of Nigeria. Great difference. I'm telling you, ladies and gentlemen, we can break it down to a link as to the reason why we must change direction next year. But you do not just have a regular candidate in front of you, you have one of you. You have someone who is going to fight for you. Because it's somebody who has always fought for you. And you too have always fought for me. When Lewis was standing here, he didn't tell you that when I picked him up at the airport, when he came to the US, I took him to my house, or wherever we were, I don't remember. And he said, ah, right now, I think we can stop thinking about Nigeria for a little bit, I need to read. And I said to Lewis, they have just removed two subsidies in Nigeria. And he said, sure, because you're coming to subsidy in Nigeria, I need to buy it for the Nigeria. I said, no, as long as our people are going to be suffering, we do as long wherever we may be. So as soon as he just disposed, he said, okay, let's go for it. We entered into my car, put my laptop as a host into it. Lewis, that was supposed to stay in my house, we didn't sit inside of the house for another five days. And that was the period that we had to hijack the town hall meeting and the privacy of the internet. Of a minister who came to New York, I mean, New York in those days. Greatest Nigerian students. I'm telling you some of these teenagers, so that you will understand that the battle is not going to be easy. Uh, the battle we need to fight next year is going to require that those of you who feel that you have not joined the army of revolutionary and freedom fighters, you need to join it now. And those of you who think that you are tired of fighting, those that live in the reserve, we refer to as being in the reserve, you also have to go back to the battleground, where there's battle for the war. And this includes former student leaders who are out there thinking that, well, it's not the end of the world, there's no time to look back. This is the best time in the history of Nigeria to take our country back from the cruel political class that hijacked the country and make it impossible for us to experience progress and prosperity in this country. You know, they have always told you that it's not possible for Nigeria to be okay. In fact, they are vicious enough to tell you that there's not, there's not enough money to take care of things that we want from them. One of them one time in New York told me, when he came to attend an event in New York, I confronted him. He said, well, the project of Nigeria is not just one to, that of the fire department in New York. So I asked him, a very logical or stupid question, and he never answered. Has any time your budget is at the fire department? But it's not fire engines in Nigeria. So in one year, if your project is equivalent to that of the air group department, but it's not trucks in Nigeria. Anytime your project is equivalent to that of a university, if we, that's not university, we like that of the US. And I was looking at him, I said, you know, Shoré, I didn't think about it that way. I said, of course, people don't think. But this is the time to force them to start thinking. But they are not going to be thinking about thinking or what to do, but we are going to force them to think about how to get out of the way. And for those of them who don't want to get out of the way, well, it's not up to me. I am not going to deliberate or decide what will be the outcome of the fight that I didn't start. We didn't start this fight. We were generally, you know, attending university, doing studies, and we just asked to give them what we desire, they refused to give us. Our parents generally did, you know, work in the civil society. They finished after thirty-five years. They deserve pension and graduate, they didn't give them. Our people are generally sick sometimes, they needed hospital. They deserve doctors, they didn't give them. Our people are generally hungry, frequently. They deserve food, you didn't give them. Our young people are generally graduating from school, they deserve jobs, you didn't give them. Our students are generally also requiring scholarship. They deserve it, you didn't give them. So there is one who started the fight. And because they have invited us to this fight, we must fight the fight to finish next year. I have said it, great difference. I am not apologetic about it. And I also want to tell you that, yes, some of you must have seen that there are other candidates, right? In fact, some of you have seen other young candidates. But this is not about being young, right? Because we have a lot of young senators who are used to it, right? They want dancing around my side. Yes, you have a lot of young governors, right? Great difference. You have a lot of young governors who are not paying salaries. So it's not about being young at all. It's about being responsible. It's about being capable. It's about being capacious. It's not about being capacious, but about having the capability to stand up to both local godfathers and godmothers, and also international police, who might not perform away in the future. We simply haven't had a leader in a long time, or set a leader who can deliver on progress, who turn this country around. Ladies and gentlemen, there's nothing else that I need to tell you, I've seen the world. And there's no big deal about America or Europe. The only difference is that where they are supposed to build roads, they put it there. When they wanted to start the European Union, they didn't call anybody to a meeting. In fact, they stole the idea of the European Union from Africans who were trying it in the fifties. But they decided to do what Africans didn't do. They decided to raise Europe. So in some places, they were building tunnels underground, highways. They were redesigning their guest base. And when they were done, they finally went to the meeting and said, we want to have the European Union. And they said, how is that possible? We are all linked now. But imagine that it would take you a season to get from here to London on Sundays, that you get from Lagos to England. I spent six hours before on the highway between Bega and Moway on my way to the meeting. I go to the meeting to the meeting. Anybody who left for London would have arrived in the UK. If they wanted to go to France, they would have arrived France. If they wanted to go to Sweden, they would have arrived Sweden. But what was the difference? Leadership. People with the ability to think completely clearly into the future. And you don't have to pay a pastor for a man to see what we hope for the future. It is a matter, it is a function of planning. It's a function of commitment, it's a function of focus. It's a function of understanding and exposure. It's a function of internet. And I can tell you that our leaders don't have internet. A man who is looking for his visa certificate six years old is not a man with internet. In fact, to make it worse, to now be looking for a certificate from the money that he not conducted his exam, which makes you look like you are idiots. It refers to the, oh, listen, Bohari, it wasn't why I conducted Bohari's exam. It was conducted by Cambridge University. In fact, yesterday, they put it on their website, you can Google it and look for it, that it's only, they are waiting for Bohari to apply for them to release his certificate. Why is then Bohari going to Bahre to do for a certificate at Cambridge University in London? Considering the fact that the president is a rebel and racist to the UK. As a matter of fact, I once told them, I was actually a Sahari reporter, that they can give me an authorization and a benefit to go to Cambridge University, to collect certificates, and bring it to Abuja for free. They never got back to me. That shows to you that something shady is in that certificate. It's not that it's not Bohari, that it's not there. Just that some people are alleging that the man that Bohari has from Sudan, really hear from me. Because I don't know that to be true. But something shady is going on. But it is also a smart decision. But what's what is this, right? We have been taken for fools in here. And there has to be a point, ladies and gentlemen, basically, very interesting. There has to be a point, and I'm stepping forward, that we draw the line. We have to draw the line at that point in now, where we say to ourselves, enough is enough. And we have to draw a line and say to ourselves that nobody in the history of this country will take us for granted again, ever. There has to be a line drawn, very clear, in the sand, right? That you will never vote for somebody who doesn't know who's left from his right anymore. There has to be a line that will never vote for an Arab in this country again. There has to be a line that somebody will not become the landlord of a state when people in states cannot even afford to eat. There has to be a line that you will never have to deal with electricity failure again in a university in two thousand and eighteen. I was ashamed, I have to say, when I got here. Because you know why Obatun Paholo University, not you now, the university, should have solar panels on top of our UAB on right now? That is not only powering this or powering this half of the campus. That is the essence of the university. Yes, if you are not researchy enough to understand that if they have windmills, windmills, and those mountains in my king, and solar panels on top of this building, to the extent that electricity failure will be gone back in the past, we better close down the universities. Greatest Nigerian students. But we are not closing down our university. We are closing down the political space that has robbed us of our dignity of fifty-eight years. We are closing down the banks that laundered our future into the hands of the natives. We are closing down our roads that have become the place to die instead of reaching their destination. We are closing down our hospitals that have become a place to go and get consultation on how to be aware. We are closing down our schools that are teaching endurance, the sort of education. We are closing down our traditional institutions that are teaching us of sadness, but not giving us the dignity we deserve as people. We are closing down everything that is wrong with Africa's biggest country, Nigeria. Because why? The black race is looking up to us to get its right in Nigeria. Ladies and gentlemen, I may not have the opportunity to be involved again uh, in the way that we are happening today. I don't even know if we survive this. But what I can tell you is that whatever happens, we must reach the promised land. We are not going back to their Egypt anymore. And I'm glad that you guys said that this is the Jerusalem of the struggle. And someone said that this is the maker of radicalism. I am telling you that until you deliver on the freedom that it was expecting you to deliver on, it can also be a binding of injection. And I don't think you want to see that. Greatest Nigerian students. Greatest Nigerian students. Greatest Nigerian students. You know, I couldn't do this without the help of our United here at OAU. Here in the Shu State, here in the southwest, and in Nigeria's the whole. We couldn't have gathered this number of intellectuals, patiently listening and following and applauding without a time. We have not paid anyone of you a goal for today. In fact, since we come, we came in here today, I have not seen water, salt to anybody. But you are listening with rapt attention. You are shared where necessary. In fact, you have goods, because you have a reputation for domestic fine people, right? You even need to fella at the time. And that is why I like this place, because if you are not sure of yourself, you can't come to OAU to come and talk about the future of Nigeria. I do not imagine that Atifu will be coming here anytime soon. I do not imagine that Bohari will become, except they have a parachute. Because last time, the last time one of them made a mistake and came here, that is the Good Lord Donata. He almost left in a body bag. So they have learned their lessons. So we must keep this space safe. We must continue to do what we do cautiously to keep sanity in Nigeria until Nigeria becomes a safe country. But most importantly, for those who are not aware, I'll show you the partial words of Paul Marley's redemption song, which says that emancipate yourself from mental state. No more but assets can play our mind. For how long? Sha, de, why we stand aside? He said, no atomic energy, right? I didn't hear you. No atomic energy can stop the time. The atomic energy of T R B will not stop the time next year. Because the next time is our time. Our time is the time of freedom and liberation. Great difference. Greatest difference. Greatest Nigerian students. Greatest Nigerian people. Thank you so much for listening. Hope to see you in Nigeria next year, twenty eighteen.
Take it back, take it back, take it back. Please, please, um, now we are in the decision to go on our seat. We are going to be the question and answer section now. And please, we'd like everybody to participate, like you have said, we have to emancipate ourselves from ignorance. Please, let's have our seat. Please, let's not run out of the road now. Please, please, we are currently praying to the end of the program. We would like to have the question and answer, and while we are preparing for that, we'll be quickly recognizing some people.
Before we go into the question and answer section, we'd like to invite OAU Take It Back coordinator, person of Jaiyala Mathi, who also known as Senator Ma, the master student of nuclear science and engineering of OAU campus. So he's coming to give us remarks. So while you get your questions ready, please, please let us welcome Jaiyala Mathi. A round of applause for him.
Of the greatest difference. Ladies and gentlemen, you can leave the door, ladies in half of the show. The question and answer session is where you have question for the principal, and he's going to attend to these questions. So he can say it all, he can answer your questions, he can fulfill all your inquiries. So we are going to this question and answer section. Wait behind, listen to other aspects of his personality, other great areas by one clarification. So don't forget the part of this second place, thank you. Of the greatest difference. Great difference, no reals now. Of the greatest difference. Please, let's sit down, colleagues. Let's sit down. Uh, we've had a bunch of, from a, a ebullience in sexuality, twenty nineteen by God's grace, uh, comrades Shoré. Uh, but before the Western and the West Coast section, I want to specially appreciate our colleagues for three months will be pl- will be planning, uh, for this program. And this comments, this emphasis, ever military, ever total colleagues, they will be thoroughly there this program. And a lot, a lot, a lot of motivations, respect, from our colleagues, from every different parts, uh, of the Shu States. But then, uh, we have, as people, as rightly know, the presence of, uh, some eminent specialists here. We have the presence of Dr. Small, Dr. Kedjai, a lot, a lot of all, and lecturers, and, uh, non-academic staffs who are here. I want to say on behalf of our colleagues that we sincerely appreciate you. Thank you so much. One thing stands true, as colleagues we have said, that the future lies in our hands. We cannot afford to go back to the Egypt, never again. It's straight to the, uh, promising land of history. And so I knew that this is, as this, our program is, uh, very unique indeed. It is the, 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 the evolution of OAU, uh, I mean, Take It Back on campus, Shoré on campus. It's a different intervention entirely. And we, as radical, as cautious as we are, we never went for the national to give us direction. We took step, we begin to map, map out different plans to ensure we gain a winning heart of all cautious, uh, OAU students. Very soon, they announced that there is a program, uh, to introduce what we call Shoré on campus, a deep scholarship, and missed many other interventions. We knew that as late as, I mean, all of the major problem of the youth, which is about seventy percent of the total population of this country, is a net to. Some of these, it doesn't provide it, but they have a need to strategize and think in, uh, different gimmicks, of course, most gimmicks, to, to arrest their mind. Recently, we've admitted to different, uh, faculty heads to ensure we, we, we have a smooth map out of the plan. Very soon, all campuses in this country will be designed with an initiative and everybody will have the same mindset, a sense we are already. But I'm sure this fire, of course, is discussed so interesting that this river is coming out of, uh, OAU, which is known as OPAU University. Somebody, some people who don't, they don't prefer coming to OPAU University, but OAU, OPAU University, of course, would decide. We are testing national agents, even without, uh, without, without the pool to do that. So on, uh, on this note, I want all of you to be conscious of, uh, different interventions that we'll be bringing up. It is only to bring our minds together so that we can consciously assess more need and necessity to take this nation back from the may of the whole U K. Greatest difference, and Atifu difference. I will not leave you, we have also appreciations of, uh, important facilities. Dr. Agira is a central, uh, you know, I wasn't so surprised when someone was walking down, uh, I was just every, even a little office, they were just like, Agira pay. It is, she's not known thus far, for, 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 for the use of impact in, uh, in, in, yeah, in consciousness, in supporting, I mean, in consciousness, supporting what will benefit the masses. As well, we have many of these, and also, uh, our own MC. You see, to look at him, he was a thirty, but no, I'm young. Dr. Ware is a diplomatic. Dr. Ware was the former ENSA president. There are a lot of messages, you know, they just think it's about running and living. We need to take him back together. Dr. Ware was, uh, the former, in fact, uh, IF, IFNSA president, and also the national, the former National Medical Association. I mean, the president. So I really want to appreciate you for, uh, your solidarity and also concern to ensure that we have this successful program. I want to say on the last note, before the next agenda is handled, that greatest difference, if there's anybody left, all these priests that are martyrs of this country, or the saints of all, of these nations, does not concern or have. if there's anybody there, who's this, that monitors of this country or the status quo of this nation does not concern or have, I want to tell you that you are part of what destroy this country. Because if you take step right now, we can take this, can take this nation back twenty nineteen, with our brothers who are there. And on the last, I love saying, take it back!
Astral!
Take it back!
Astral!
Thank you, Senator Maou. Ah, we're actually going to the interactive session, session. Ah, so we have questions, we have answers for you. Um, so just, um, we're ready with your questions, the bikes and the, um, motion around the floor line. So before we do that, I'll talk about Dr. Okijari and Dr. Smolung to give a couple of two remarks before we go to that session of the program. Thank you.
Greatest Nigerian students!
Yes!
Exactly, it appears as if we are hungry or hungry or both. Greatest Nigerian students!
Yes!
Um, I won't waste our time. I'd like to, from what our colleagues have just discussed with us, I have two questions. You may not answer immediately, but ponder the questions and do the nature. How many of us have our BBC? Number one. Number one, and I see for the fact that it is not enough to share Shoré here, only for you to do your voting on your Facebook and your Twitter twenty nineteen. Share yours, how many of us have BBCs? Number two, Shoré will be known to reach everywhere in Nigeria. But how many of us are ready to go to a private back room? Tell them all that they are strong first now, and to get them to where they should get it, enlighten them in ways they should enlighten, and guide them to take the right decision on the election day. And like, eh, like how I just said, if you do not vote, you automatically lose your moral rights to complain against a non-functional government. So in other words, if it stands, go for it. We got it wrong again twenty nineteen. And you do not vote, or your, your vote was supporting, oh, you did not vote for, because of me not, please shut up, don't complain, suffer and smile. We must part of this whole debate. If we are there, enough is enough. Enough should be truly, truly, truly enough. People are suffering in Nigeria, we cannot continue to neglect sufferers. Let us get our decisions on time. Let us bring down solutions and solutions are applicable. Our inclusion tone in twenty nineteen will determine what happens to Nigeria hereafter. For those of us who have benefited from the pros, let me tell you, a capricious does not want you to die. It does not want you to enjoy this giving, so that you can continue to serve him. All of them are capricious. So if I just unfortunately now, on somebody we can come to question, somebody we can move straight, trace, in this, any problem, still sitting here off his house, ah, Shoré, that is all that she saw. Please, let us not lose this opportunity. I have my resignation during this protest, I think I expressed it in a forum last week, when my department held a symposium, which was like a wake up call for this whole campus. Great Ife, it's been a long time since you just got to say that. This university is still being like the university campuses in Nigeria. It's been a party that has students in symposium last week, and people were in the justice department in Ife. Ife, therefore, there's a struggle in those states. Hasu, Nasu, Sanju, nobody was talking about symposium. Nobody was presenting anything. So that is where my sense of protection, my respect. Let's accept it. If we agree that we have suffered enough, if we agree that we need freedom from this attitude, if we agree that we want to put a stop to the rule of perhebals and the beyonds in our midst, please, let us reinvigorate this movement. And the simple reason is that Shoré, although we hear yesterday and the other week and the other week of the joint in Nigeria, for those of us who are proud, I totally, totally volunteer to be part of this movement. So that we can, we can, we can accept and we accept yesterday's grass, not for anything. I mean, some of us have had opportunities to bring, or have a, that would, but when you want to, your group must, must, it's not very. So for that, let us make sure that we sustain this culture of enlightenment. You don't need to campaign, but when I don't need to campaign, just let us continue to enlighten Nigerians. Campaign has a normal less satisfactory basis in Nigeria. Any politician that campaigns is just doing the regular thing that they are always doing. Just let us continue to talk to ourselves. Nigerians really need to be emancipated. Finally, I was a tutor, if you want to, I guess, a book I gave, bring up on the question of the masses. The question I had, when I thought, are the masses ready for emancipation? I thought that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Dr. Dejari. We call upon Dr. Smolung, the present chairman of Goldman, thank you, sir.
Greatest Ife! Greatest Ife! Articulate Ife! Ever-conscious Ife! Evadynamic Ife! Greatest Ba Ba! Greatest O O! Greatest of the, greatest of the, greatest of the, greatest of the, greatest Ife! The future belongs to those who believe in the beauty of their dreams. The youth are in the majority. And we have to believe in the beauty of our dreams of a better country. I want us to take this belief into actions. We have to be part of voting. We have to be part of decision making. The politicians, regular politicians, use us during elections and they dump us afterwards. So this I want us to get hold, that we are no longer youth and dumb. The future belongs to those who believe in the beauty of their dreams. Catalog, go back to Shoré's actions, go back to Shoré's past, and see that this man means well for this country. We have to believe in him, we have to support him by voting, by being part of the chain to take Nigeria back from the hands of those that sold it into Egypt. Greatest Ife!
Yes!
Articulate Ife! Take it back! Take it back! Take it back!
Thank you, sir, thank you. Okay, ah, yes, we're going to be doing this in, ah, series. We're taking five persons to talk at the time that, ah, please try to answer the question at the same time. Okay, so, ah, if you have one ask a question, do you please, just raise, rise up and let the usher give you the mic. Ah, one question for that, I'd like to recognize a governorship aspirant of the AAC from Ousstens. He's contested the governor of Ousstens by name engineer Akiwale Laosso. Please, now hit us right up and wait in the office. I'm so happy to have you, thank you, sir, thank you, thank you for the work of this, we appreciate you. Also, here is, ah, his deputy, the deputy governor candidate for AAC, Ousstens, the president of Alaja, Balsat, Obonu. Thank you so much, thank you for the, for the, for the. Okay, who is number one? All right, a usher, please, can you get the mic? All right, let us take us in this video first. Okay, so head up, there's now the mic for them, they go like that, they will take two hands, you then have a brother. All right, we don't have ten people coming up, let's just have them out, what have also goes, which I can't understand. So, um, let's have one person from that end. Okay. One, two, three, two, come. Okay, four. Okay, five, six, seven, someone from that end. Okay, please, seven.
He called us, he called us, he called us.
Okay, 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 okay.
Look at, it's not.
All right, all right, okay, so we're gonna take it very short, please. Everybody have only thirty seconds for your question, okay, let us have here. Please, let's have a question for your thirty, thirty seconds for your questions, please. Make it free, very, very fast, okay, let's go ahead.
Um, sir, I want to ask.
Your name.
My name is Tywood Allah, Tywood Allah, and my question is, um, what makes you feel that, that you are different from all of the other candidates? For, for example, like there is nothing else, what makes you have that, um, um, vibe, that ability?
Oh, I'd like to know your opinion, I'd just give them a very short answer to the question, please. I don't repeat it now, the question has been said, just go back to it, stay, don't repeat the question, please.
Okay, don't give them the mic, just put it in their mouth.
Good afternoon, I'm right. My question is this, I have created a list of the number of contestants for Senate and House of Lords. And when we look at statistics, the AAC has left than twenty century experience, left than fifty House of Lords experience. And this, and I want to ask, the Nigerian political system is organized in that people doing the politics in their own area. Do you think that you want to achieve your own political, ah, eh, agenda? Ah, my question is this, how would this not affect the chances of your party emerging? Thank you.
Good afternoon, sir. Ah, good afternoon, sir. My name is Masenjuste Nifilimis. And I've been asking the election, like, knowing the last Shu State election, we could see what happened and how everything was totally dismantled. I would like to have that, how are you going to handle such a game like this, if after voting for you and if it's stressing our effort to compete for you, things like this you have done, okay, thank you.
All right, um, my name is Alaja. My question is, we all are aware that there's a problem in this country, which is the problem of statistics. We all know that there's no average data or consistent data in this country. And we also know that the way that it was used in US, how that became the tool to be used. Now, my question is that, what exactly are you doing to improve our data accuracy in this country? And not just that, there's a problem of electricity, which you mentioned also. Please, can you just give us a little bit of how you intend to solve it?
Thank you so much. My question is, I want to read, I mean, but, but with your talk, I'm very, I'm very hopeful with what you have said.
Great Ife!
My question is, my question is, I, I can be a part of, 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 thank you. But my question is, do you think you as the president and the likes of Bokona Salaki as the president, you think it can make any difference? And secondly, are you a fan of corruption like the likes of Obasan, your high leader, and your, are you a, you are, you are a bad boss?
All right, thank you. I'm not stopped by another person to respond and go ahead and express my set of thoughts, questions, thank you.
He's writing down, he's writing down.
Good afternoon. My question is as regards your hundred thousand Naira minimum wage plan. Does he think that a lot of the goods and roads used in Nigeria are not locally produced? Most of it are imported. By the time you raise the minimum wage hundred thousand, people start buying a lot of imported consumer goods. And this month are going to be a perfect time. So how do you plan managing the challenges that will come with this home win agreement? Also, I want to raise that, not of what you said today, is what I have done and what the president leaders for Nigeria is doing. He said very little of what you are going to do for this country. And I freely, I hope to work on it as time goes on, thank you.
Okay, now, I'm gonna take a more question. So if you have three questions, give the best of the question, don't give me any questions, just give me one question, that will go around everybody, thank you.
All right, thank you. My name is Moses Zandt. I would like to ask a question about the repair of the country, we know this country is not meeting your estimate. And then, if I have to repair the country, we need some contractors, and most of these contractors themselves are for us, that is, they give them money to repair something and they use them and pay it once, because, Mr. Sorry, you can't be there to project of every project. And then, the question is, who are the contractors to be used in the repair of the country, are what? Thank you.
My name is Adolfo Aloua, this is my question. My question is, based on the principle of separation of power, when you were talking, I believe in one thing, that the singular Messiah has never changed the goal of this country. And based on that, I believe that if I thought the membership of your party does not enjoy the electricity, I'd never be sending and left. I don't know how you intend to actually know achieve some of your policy, because the system itself is lost. And I believe that even if Pastor Deboye, which contests at the presence of this country, the system will even indict all the actual people who follow. So I believe that, if I thought you actually want to, you know, achieve policy, how do you intend to actually go about it with your singular, low policy being attached to that, thank you.
Good afternoon, sir. Good afternoon, sir. My name is Tiore Yousamouli, a big man. So I want to ask, are we going for presidency or are we going for revolution? Thank you.
My name is Tetsuiki. My question is just about the fact that we have a lot of young aspiring presidents right now in Nigeria, and all of them, they are in a very, very nice chemistry, very, very good spirit, that they want to change the country. But now, politics is a game of numbers. And I imagine that every, about ten of you have divided your votes into different percentages. There is a likelihood that they're still going to be a very, very bad governor. So what do you think about imagining all of this together and having something that's really good?
Yeah, good afternoon, my name is Oli Tawoakwiga. Yes, today we see the matter that are being over time, what is the emancipation program. But my question is, how do you intend to reach those in the rural areas? How do you intend to reach our mother, our father, our schools, who can be bought? Those who don't stop the nest, those who don't watch television, those who have people who have taught their education in their homes. How do you intend to reach, that's my question.
Um, my name is Oluwani Shalala Michael. Um, I am waiting for this hour, as they knew, that I'll be able to speak my mind out. Actually, sorry, my question is, my question is, how do you intend, I mean, as a, as a student, like I graduated from this university, how do you intend, um, giving us a program? I don't understand, because I can't, I can't believe my students are not getting a program.
All right, um, my name is Luksu Lu Dari. My name is Luksu Lu Dari. I would like to know, sir, um, how or where do you think, ah, that was, that is to give us a sector by sector breakdown of where you think the current political class have missed it, and how you will tend to do something differently when you get there, so that we can be more confident that you will actually can solve our problems.
Good afternoon, sir. I'm, I'm a Michael, I mean. I want to know what are your plans to resuscitate the deteriorating economy that we have in Nigeria, thank you.
Um, my name is Alawei Pidion Ake. Um, the question I have for you is, what are the realistic measures that, of which I take it back, exactly have in choosing to take it back? Like, for example, we are in the election, what's just came here to tell us today, and what others will come to tell us? Now, what do you have to work on, what do you have to do? Because right now, time, and we say up never, up never, and I've given administration, see now. And even in your present, I'm still going to say up never, because it happened yesterday. So if you've got your precedent, what are you, what problem exactly you want to solve in your game?
My name is Pidio, and we are an economist. I want to ask, I thought about our three question, but because of the time, I don't have my time, I need to talk to the boss. Now, you use more hundred thousand Naira in the minimum wage. Nigeria does not have a problem of minimum wage. The problem we have, an economist, that we have a backward inflation. If you put the money in circulation, because the money is in production, in inflation, and that's what we're wanting there. So how do you now manage it, if you put money to circulation, if you have a money to this? In production, now, classical economy, new economy, we get it, we, the legal economy, I'm ready. There's no way you can have money to circulation, if you have a money to this, it's in production, thank you.
Good afternoon, um, pulu, 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 pulu. Good afternoon, uh, this is our president, um, according to one of your question.
Good afternoon, uh, this is our president, um, according to one of your question, you said you legalize cannabis. Yeah, now, I want to ask, Africa is a moral, um, continent, we are very moral in Africa. Now, how do you intend to balance legalization of cannabis and other aspects of life, especially in Africa? Because all these, um, things, they, they influence crime, rape and stuffs like that. So, how do you intend to legalize it, um, bal- balance it with morality?
Alright, um, good afternoon, um, Opata Knechko, good afternoon. Yes, I have a question for you. Actually, you're coming for, um, most of thinking about immigration from the cabal. Actually, very hard intention of thinking about immigration, from, um, thinking about this nation from the hands of the corrupt official. But one thing is this, we have to know that the greatest, greatest program of immigration in this uniting, tribal, tribal, um, tribalism, multine. So, how do you get the capitalist, Japanese kind of attitude between our Nigerian and the West? What are your plans towards defining this nation to be its standard of what we want as one nation, have a problem, and so we have to go?
Good afternoon, my name is, um, and we know we said, since he woke the freedom school, closing the door. Nigeria has the more, more, out of school children. So, I honestly, the most happy health survey, we saw that now, Nigeria has a consuming of children, out of school. Now, the country's digital process, and it's a tough and it's a hard thing. Since that Nigeria now has over ten million children out of school. When you become president, all the time on train, and considering the train trade, over ten million adolescents, all abroad, and the people abroad, what can you see or what can you do when you become president?
Good afternoon, I really, I really, sir, once you also be telling us you made the corrupt economy possible, as you've been saying before. And what we do, can we sustain our economy, when you can't just sit on the present, thank you.
My name, my name is President, my question is that, how is it possible that this, your, eight, eight, eight months? Or should you have that, we still have politics for the national, in Nigeria, and it's still going, I think it's so well up in your suit. There are some people who are restricted from voting, from, so, answer their political issues. So, I want to ask, how is it possible that this, so that, I guess?
Good afternoon, sir, good afternoon, good afternoon, everyone. Um, my name is Sosiniva, um, we know that, um, those one candidate runs for, um, an election, but the youth. We understand that there are plenty, um, presidential candidates who are youth now. The question is, how do you intend to manage the diversity of votes that comes from this order, young presidential candidates? Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ola Inbesen. I pray that we win this back together. But my question is that, what, um, on the long run, the battle seems difficult to win, as maybe during the election day. I want you to promise us that you won't defect and disappoint with your supporters. I just want you to promise, and remind of everybody here.
My name is Lawat, so that, how do you, you, are you too thick of a president? Please tell us that, or how you think, to rule Nigeria? Take complexity.
Take it back! Well, I am the first thing, I believe in Omoyele Shorere. My question, I understand that you may hold, but my question is this, we believe in Shorere, we want him to change Nigeria, like town of all the people he does. My question is, we know, we know, we know what other data that can be poor of. Very soon campaign is going to start. My question is, what is the plan for continuing of this party, of this movement? You're not even able to show, right, have you also look up, up to any other person? Now, I should look for this movement, so that our, so that our belief will not be for short.
Uh, thank you very much, Omoyele. Uh, my question is simple, I believe all politics is local. We are in Oe, presently, we have a broken presidency on campus. Promise that, some students, there's a strike going on, but some students are presently in class, Oe classes. And I think, uh, the fact that, as you are used to be, uh, the, the, the best, uh, union, when it comes to electoral, uh, in Nigeria. And the fact that, now, we, we have, uh, the strike keep going, we are, I think, yes, we need to address it, uh, by the president. Also, the point of politics, which is the cause of the strike itself. I think, all of the struggles we are having, the threat of increments in view, especially in one, on the, uh, the introduction of the smart person era at the College of Sciences. All of these things are the things that the president have found, the opportunity of this event to please and, alright, my name is, thank you very much.
Um, thank you very much, my name is Oyo Lafe, I'm from Nigeria. Before I post it into my question, I would like to make an observation I didn't expect to hear. And that's the fact that, Omoyele Shorere would be the first presidential candidate. Already the first politician on campus, that will willingly give room for students to ask questions without being bothered. And I think that's the commonality. And in fact, that would, that would not be possible, even because of your history of driving, and your participation in the name of the union. And in that time of election, I would also like to tweet with you, um, audience president, and also Moli, here in the school. The president will be at the time, when even our university authorities, the government people, for the setting opinions. And I am speaking to you, president, my heart, and for that of this guy standing behind you, at the block. And when we went, when we went to the day, you know, to seek the reason for the block, uh, for the blocking of the border. The investments they gave to us were a trip and root for the reason of, which one of our office. And I don't think in any society, it's the actions that will provide anything for the benefit. That aside, I think it is also necessary to say, that we are, um, today, uh, I, I know yesterday, March and last year, when the union was heavily prescribed by this, um, vice chairman. And when he wanted to defend it, he said, and I put, that is not prescribed to the union, it's suspended in the fifties. As far as I'm concerned, the union cannot be prescribed. In fact, it's a ridicule on the collective intelligence of over a five thousand people. He said that the vice chairman has prescribed the union. So, I would like, Omoyele Shorere to give his own opinions for the presidency, so that I respect it.
Um, good afternoon, my name is Jerry, and, um, one of the questions is very important. Um, as a presidential experience, you understand that, um, past presidents, uh, presidents, are the romance with the West, that, um, the Western speed. On that, what is your plan, um, managing the, um, romance, romance issue of the West? And is how you connect yourself with our Western government, not, um, affecting your own markets? They are indirectly ruling you, because you have to sign some things with them, they actually give you, if they are true, um, that I can't contain, you and go and the rest, I mean, I, I am body. There's, now, secondly, I want to ask, um, I was a farmer, and I want to ask, what plan do you have for the culture in this organization, in this country? Because you understand that, Oi, as he knows, what plan do you have for the culture in this country? Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, I will try to start with that this question, before I go, before I turn it on stage. I want us to know that this movement is about...
Good afternoon, everyone. Of the great and Stephen. Um, I have two questions, first of, first of all, I saw a Britishman shaking a Nigerian, uh, at the back of a vest. You may so, I, I need a simple explanation of that, because this British are the ones who organize us, uh, are enforcing our government, who wants to do this, so I don't really understand that. And second of all, how do you feel the generation that believes in jungle justice? I want you to share more like that.
This is the last question, please, this is the very last question.
Thank you, I greet you all in the house. Um, once again, I will thank, uh, Mr. Shorere. Thank Mr. Shorere for this, uh, mind blowing movement of, uh, emancipation from mental slavery. My question goes to the audience. In future, we are here because of our future. We are here because of Nigeria, we are in Nigeria. And my question goes to you, Omoyele Shorere, that are we ready to take our future back? Because, yeah, when...
Oh, God, thank you, yeah. It's time, I know.
I give you this one.
This time, it's before I start, not on my show. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Alright, okay, now, before I hand over the mic to, uh, our president, I just want to say this. This movement has the representation in that, in that, as many states, as thirty states in Nigeria, and as many local governments as you can think of. Also, the websites, and people are protected up there, and get more information about the party. Now, this is not only about this president, Omoyele Shorere, it's about everybody, okay? For one, anyone who is confused on this social, I bring my local organization, within my camp, because it is, it's, 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 everybody here is challenging you to join that movement. It's not only about, it's about us. It also does right now, that it might not be to see the promise that. For that, why you that is not going to that promise, that you going to be wasting coin, without seeing the promise that was been gotten to. Some people challenge you, it's not about him and asking, how do you do this? How do we do this? How do we, the friends and family, that market manager, empty of yours, that class friend, the presence of that station, the local government, area you control, how do you go there and mobilize? Now, people have invested money, with flyers, people to topics of flyers, with, but, not even even knowing it, your loyalty, moving and pushing the movement. So, it's not about Omoyele Shorere, it's about here, it's about our future. You have to not be the president, the leader of this movement, and we have been, have been, as a role player to follow, to make that local community. So, I'm telling everybody, don't say it's him, how he doing this, how we doing this? He has stayed out the, the, he has stayed the policy, he has fed on the agenda, that is forgetting, uh, by so, so, which are, thank you. All of our brother, I want us to, Omoyele Shorere, to come to us for this question, thank you.
Great and Stephen. Where's the microphone? Great and Stephen. Uh, you guys managed to ask me that one question. And I looked at all the questions there, there are no options, I was hoping that if you asked me that one question, there would be multiple options. So that I can choose A, B, or C. But I'm going to address this, thank you so much. And I should say before I start, that this particular event is being likened to the whole world. Our movement is a global movement. Nigerians across the world are interested in what is going to happen in Nigeria next year. So, as you guys probably heard, there was an online voting that happened a few days ago, last week. And we won, our party won that online election by eighty-one point three percent. And that is something that people are watching and paying attention to this. First question here, you say, how do you feel that you're different from the other candidates? I will start by saying, that how many candidates in Nigeria today can stand in front of great affair? Without being afraid of what to say, being afraid of how you will react? That is the starting point, that I feel connected to you, because you feel accepting of me. What I think, Frank, is that, I have brought this, ladies and gentlemen, standing up for what is right for thirty good years. Since nineteen eighty-nine, when I became a student of the University of Lagos. And what was a problem in nineteen eighty-nine, it wasn't a bigger problem than this. We had to keep the military out of power. We have to bring, or we have to bring to Nigeria, a democratic era. And in nineteen eighty-nine, you know how old I was? I was eighteen years old. I'm now forty-seven, I've been fighting consistently for thirty years. How old is Nigeria? Fifty-eight years old. Out of fifty-eight years, I've been fighting for thirty-eight years. And you can take the rest of twenty-eight years away from it, it's a period that I'm planning, I was probably planning in the other world, to fight for a better Nigeria. So, you cannot find many candidates. With due respect, ladies and gentlemen, great Nigerian students, who have fought consistently for what is right for thirty years in Nigeria. You can't find other candidates who fought Babangira. You can't find other candidates who went ahead and fought Shuleka, and helped Bokola, his internal government. You can't find other candidates, even though some of them are in their seventies, who have fought to bring about an end to the Abacha regime. You can't find so many candidates who fought during June twelve, even though they were of age, some of them are that one. You can't find any candidates, or so many candidates who fought in nineteen ninety-eight, and look at games, to fight for the restoration of, restoration of student unions across Nigeria. And also the resignation of student leaders, particularly the former student activists at Opapen, the Aurora University. This is people who basically, and to the fact, who were inveterated, resident as students. They can't find so many candidates today who fought against war time. You can't find that many candidates who fought against the other back and back. You can't find that many candidates who set off a website to fight a Russian after twelve years, for every rock Nigerian leader, from local government councilors to presidents. You can't find that many candidates, ladies and gentlemen, who have demonstrated integrity over time. A candidate who you can look at and say, this guy must sell, being out, for women collect money from the nation, to do the other way. That is what stands up. As I know, that is, and the fact is pain, with due respect, that we have to explain why we can make Nigeria like that place. For that, we have done for thirty good years. If I was to do civil service, I would be retiring by now, probably I would be paying my graduates, right? But I'm not coming to you with any sense of entitlement. On the other side as well, I have studied very hard and obtained a master's degrees. And you know, kind of intellect, right? It shows that we have exposure, it shows that we have capacity. I'm standing in front of you here, I have not written anything down, except your questions. And I've been standing here for hours, and engaged in interacting with you. That is the kind of people Nigeria should have, you know? Somebody once asked me, oh, you know, that's starting to, Nigeria means that Obama, I said, to, 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 Obama cannot survive Nigeria, for two weeks. Think Obama should start between the bed, eh, and legs, I wrote, it will be not to top a lot of two weeks. You can't complain here, Obama cannot survive so many of the things that happened to us in the last eight months, we started, uh, campaigning in town. So, we start now, there's no question about it, it's for you to decide whether you want to vote with the government ones, or you want to vote with the other ones. Uh, somebody mentioned that AIC have only twenty senators, fifty reps in the upcoming election. You should not forget that AIC is barely two months old, and political party was recently established in less than two months old. So that we don't have twenty or so senators contesting, is something that I should to show to you that we have been doing our homework, well enough to be able to identify, who can represent us in the Senate. But let me ask you, do you know twenty senators in Nigeria, really, that is fighting for you? And then, out of twenty senators in the Senate, who is doing the bidding of the Nigerian people? The answer is, we go. So, if we can even get into the national, I mean, Senate, twenty people we question, this country will be a different country. The Nigerian Senate is a retirement board of thieves. And if AIC can get thirty of our conscientious citizens and comrades into the Senate, you will have a different Senate, there's no question about it. If you can have twenty senators in Nigeria, fighting for you, your life will be different at Senate. If you can have fifty reps, I think I asked most of you, if you know the name of your reps, you probably don't know them. Because they are only due for collection of advantages and oversight function, which is an extortion of ministries, department, and agencies of government. So, if we can have fifty good senators, I mean, twenty senators and fifty hundred rep members, after they establish in two months, you will see a difference. But let me tell you, what is needed in Nigeria, is the president of Nigeria that knows what he's doing. The moment the Nigerian president knows what he's doing, the, the moment the Nigerian president start working for the Nigerian people, the difference will be clear from the morning. I want to ask you, do you know any senators in France? Probably not. Do you know any senators in America, access into Google? You probably don't. Countries don't elect senators to change their fortune. They elect presidents to change their fortune. Countries don't elect senators to change their fortune, they elect presidents to change their fortune. And the moment you have a president that is willing and ready to work for the progress of a nation. That nation will experience the kind of progress that you have never seen before. If you have problems with your senators after we become, when I become president, you can recall your senators from the senate. Do you have anything you didn't know in my life, right, before I met Gomu? We need a good president and a big land to size. And Nigeria will experience progress, prosperity and peace. And development that you've never seen before. Third question here, they're talking about Oshun State. You see, in Oshun State, I will say this, I blame the people of Oshun for what happened in Oshun State. I blame them first and foremost before I blame anybody else. I also blame them for two thing candidates that do not aspire. At the end of the day, in Oshun State, who could you have voted for? Between a dancer, you know, and another one, who is probably like, you know, a pastor assistant to the man in Lagos. There was, there was something inspiring, but most importantly, you had the right to elect a member to volunteer into office. And I'm sure that at the end of that election, the dancer won, yeah. Yes, there's no question about it. But it was up to the people of Oshun to ensure that who, the person who won the election, go up to become the governor. But when people go to sleep, you cannot blame them for it. And I hope that in our own time, next year, young people will be beginning to know, not only to ensure that you vote for the right person, but you stand your ground. Until that person is declared the president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. Until that is done, there will be no peace. If that is clear to the operation of our elections, there is no way anybody will tamper with your choice. And that is where to put it to you. Now, this is all about you, you're just one person, you are the one doing the voting. I'll be voting as well, and I'll stand my ground, and I hope all of you will stand your ground. We have done it before, we voted for a man in Nigeria, they cancelled the election, we stood our ground, the military was picked up and powerful, making that contaminator miss me. Even to today, anybody that was associated with June twelve, did not receive any respect of Nigerian people. I know the guy, I think his name is Kanu, what the name is, the, that man who worked as, one primary number for Abacha. Till today, the guy has not recovered for betraying Nigerian people. So let me go back and ensure that member we vote for will become the president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria next year. Ah, somebody was asking about stats and data. Now, we have data, the truth is that we almost have too much data to work with, right? You look at it, there are certain ways that Nigerian society is collecting data. They're collecting the data through immigration passport, they're collecting through I N E R. There is national identity, ah, card, means, there is a M T A and all the poor companies collecting your data. Ah, the driver's license people are collecting your data. The B P S by Max. The problem is that we are not putting all the data together, synchronizing them and using them for the purpose for which people use data in other countries. Of course, you cannot have people with analog brains managing digital data. So continue, have digital data, forget about processing of data. But when we come to power, the way we process data, because there's plenty of data in town. And we will arrive at this by having one single point of data entry and usage. And that is the national identity number, I N I F. Every owner data will be relevant to that data. Ah, not like a, so somebody says, as president, do you think we can handle O B J, Babagida and all these people that have stolen our money? Yes, of course. People have been saying to me, oh, don't say what we do because this is who will go and ambush you. No, we have it very clear about the future we want. Because for Korea, South Korea to get to where it is today, they had to deal with some of their past memories, right? Many countries in the world, there is no limitation status when it comes to crime against humanity. I would love to ask the person who killed the Indian army and get that person in jail, even if they are not able to live, right? I would love to find out how they dealt with our twelve billion dollars due before from the government in nineteen ninety-one. And if any of this is in possession of the money, when it comes to the treasure, it's as a money. If you have been collecting Abacha's money and loot, why not do it for others' loot? Abacha just stole after Abacha now. The bank just stole before Abacha, it's root, it's root. And we are left with collecting loot from the person who died, and we live in loot with the people who are alive to be tormenting us. I mean, you can have a religious group and clear about this. I will allow the judicial process to take its course. And if we find out that somebody stole twenty years ago, forty years ago, it's affecting you, it's affecting your rights, it's affecting your health. If there's a contractor who was given a contract to do this road, to effect, twenty years ago, I would argue, if you have money and do the road, is it not better for us? Why are we speaking, you know, in town, when they come to collecting loot from people who are alive? But not speaking to people who want to collect loot from people who are dead? If we are collecting Abacha loot, would you ever go collect Abacha loot too? Hundred thousand naira minimum wage. Let me tell you, I am not talking about minimum wage, I'm talking about living wage. Living wage is the amount of money that you take home after you work for a month. And the money can take you home and take care of your basic needs. And that's what I propose. But before we propose that, we have done our research and found out that Nigeria can afford hundred thousand. You know what hundred thousand is? Hundred thousand naira is equivalent to three hundred dollars per month. In Turkey, yesterday, the president of Turkey announced that any body of eighty to sixty five, will be receiving six hundred dollars per month. They don't have to work, that's Turkey, Turkey, what's still a backyard here, right? They don't have to work alone. They have free medical care for the aged as well. So if you are paying workers three hundred dollars per month, is that a bad thing? But let me say to you, I've heard people claim that they study economics, say that they will cause inflation. But what is very annoying about the economies in Nigeria, when they open the prices, scopies, they don't work. The one they did in Laoteng last month or so, two hundred and fifty thousand naira per student. Is that one not going to force armed robbery? Because how do you expect the parents of a person who is receiving thirty thousand naira per month? To send their child to Laoteng to repay for Nigeria, where are you going? Economics, where are you when we need you? I would rather see you when we say, pay workers, hundred thousand naira. The same economists are not questioning why senators are taking home, like, seven million naira. That is the salary of two thousand seventy-six Nigerian workers in a month. One senator takes home a salary of two thousand workers. That one doesn't cause inflation. No, you can't find the farmers, I got that. Every senator. Ladies and gentlemen, people, every Nigerian senator also has got five workers. Each of the workers receive monthly there's a four hundred and eighty thousand naira. Four hundred and five dollars. Then you have over, how many House of Representatives? They also entitle you to all kinds of abuses. And you go to the N N P C, there is nobody in N N P C that is taking home less than a million dollars per year. And that they are streaming it for awarding exams, all kinds of allowances, including traveling abroad. When they don't need to travel abroad and they collect extra goods. Nigeria is serving the British. It is time for Nigeria to repass its powers and start serving the need. You cannot expect you to leave off of thirty dollars, or thirty-eight dollars a month and give you a world-class service, you are deceiving yourself. That's what we appointed in the Nigerian Democrat Congress, and they are negotiating for peanuts. But you know why, the only reason why they are negotiating for that thousand naira? Is because we put the minimum wage issue on the front banner. We challenge them and they're using our position to fight for minimum wage. But the last I'll tell you, do you know that a few years ago, minimum wage in Nigeria was equivalent of fifty-six thousand naira? Let me tell you, economists, we've talked about it, they will go and visit their grandmother, their mother, they will go and give money to somebody to buy shoes. The shoemaker will be happy, everybody's part of the local economy energized and incentivized money. Contractors, somebody mentioned contractors. You see, Nigeria, there are differences between contractors, those are builders. So Nigeria has been dealing with contractors, we have to get rid of contractors and start hiring builders. Free people are separation of powers, that guy who has a person and is studying too much of government. I love it. The level of representation of any political party in Nigeria doesn't represent or mean that there is separation of powers. The current government, the all progressives Congress, or all mass criminals, as a lot of all the, or present criminals. They have more senators in the senate. But they don't see eye to eye when it comes to issues, they are all taking care of themselves. They have more House of Representatives in the House of Representatives. But does that translate to development? No, because you have people who are driven by greed. You need to elect people who are driven by vision. And when vision meets action, nobody can stand in the way of progress. When the president is punished, I want to deliver a high review. Somebody asks, how do you manage the standards of the contractors? If I'm president of Nigeria and I give you a contract to do in part of Lagos Expressway, until that thing is done, I'm on your neck. If I ask you to do the one in town, Nigeria is not that big, the president has got nine presidential jets and two helicopters, what are you doing at night? Why don't you go and visit contractors and make sure that, I mean builders now, and make sure that they are delivering on the project that they promised? That is the job of the president. But you know what our presidents do and our governors do? I have seen the governor of my state, he's inspecting uncompleted projects and he's still coming back to commission the project. In fact, sometimes they will commission half of the project that is uncompleted. That is not the business of a governor or a president who is commissioning project. When a project is completed, the people start using it, that is the commissioning of the project. As president of Nigeria, I will never commission the project. But I will ensure that every project that I start will be completed and the people can use it and decide whether they like it or not. Ah, the one guy asked if this is a vibe for presidency or a revolution. I'll say to you, whichever one comes first. If you do a revolution, it's even better. If we get a presidency on our side, it is a revolution that will happen to Nigeria. There is nothing next year that can be acceptable, accept in revolutionary direction for Nigeria. Change of direction. And the moment you get the presidency, you will see the revolution in the next year, there's no question about it. You can already feel it, right? You can feel that revolution is coming, like, like a woman, they used to say that, there is a natural mystic in the air. You can go and read the rest of the, the lyrics, it's tough. You can feel it. So whichever one comes first, if it's revolution, unhappy, if it's the presidency, you will be happy. Ah, young candidates are dividing the votes. No, there's no division of those among young candidates. And I'm explaining before, the fact that a young candidate goes to me that he can do the job. A lot of young people in government today, who are fighting against the threat of young people. What we have said is that when the time comes, there will be a separation between boys and men. And there will be people who thought the great separation between men and old men in Nigeria. So all of the young candidates that are saying who are there, some of them, with due respect to them, they entitle you to fight for the office of presidents. We cannot just say that they must join us. But I think it will be very clear to a lot of people very soon, who are the real candidates in this race. Even already, without much of work being done, without the private jets, without the massive rallies where they rally with rice and akara. Yesterday, this day came out with a quote, that there are eight strong presidential candidates. And they gradually gave us number three behind Attiku and Babagida, I'm sorry. It's not between Attiku and, yes, that's Oharian Attiku. But we know that in the consciousness of our people, we are number one, women, we know, we're first in the world. Ah, somebody says it was a masturbation program, which I agree with you. We have the intent to reach everyone. Reaching everyone is the job of everyone. If you have heard us today and you are convinced, call your mom, call your dad, tell your roommates, tell your girlfriend, tell your boyfriend. That you heard a guy came to my school, he spoke, and there is hope, and there's brightness for the future, and I want you guys to follow him. It's certain, it's already happening from our politicians abroad, our brothers and sisters abroad, have taken a position, most of them. That they will not be sending money to any member of their family who is not putting for the right candidate next year. I did this, I did it for them to do it. But that's how passionate a lot of people are. You see, how did you care about how to lose that key? Somebody told you about it, somebody talked to you about it, you weren't there when you was fighting for the rights of that. But see, this must populate to everybody and it is everybody's job to ensure that we do that. Ah, employment, we have plans to employ five million people within the first four years of coming to office. How do you want to do it? By way of providing electricity, pushing from three thousand megawatts to twenty-four thousand. With a combination of solar, wind, gas, biogas, even the dung of cows can be used for biogas. To generate at least one thousand megawatts of, just dung of cow. Death can be used for that. So we just need again, digitally wired brains to turn into the opportunities that are limitless in this country. And we hate ourselves if we don't give ourselves this favor next year. We cannot continue to vote for people who are dead and expect us to have life. It's not possible, it's true, it's not possible. It says, we want a sector by sector agreement, I don't have time today, but you build our websites. We have broken down what we want to put to every sector in ten places. We call this Pfizer, peace. Security number one, power, electricity number two, infrastructure, anti-corruption, economy, restructuring, health, education, agriculture and tourism. We are going to be doing all of this together at the same time and now increase the production capacity of Nigeria. Let me tell you, oil is an obsolete commodity. The real future of Nigeria lies in Nigeria's young people, our population, seventy percent of us, very creative, very energetic people who are out there. Just waiting for their talent to be discovered. just waiting for their talents to be discovered and targeted and to be prospered in the world. Unleash yourselves, unleash yourselves. From next year. That is what China is doing with their population. That's what India is doing with their population. But in Nigeria, our population is a liability instead of being an asset. We should change that. On back to the thing, how do we plan to resuscitate? I didn't write down resuscitation. They just offer resuscitation to the economy. It's production, production, production. But I tell you, one question, right? Is that, as I mentioned, this PISA is between production of electricity and infrastructure alone, there are over three million jobs hanging out. Just to put together solar panels, and in farthest countries, you can hire over twenty thousand people. And you know the effect in Nigeria? The moment someone has a hundred thousand, it belongs to another twenty or twenty-five people. Because here, we are a family, you know, we have a chain of reaction of wealth. The moment a person is wealthy, everybody in the family somehow gets something out of it. So that chain reaction will affect a lot more people. What do you need as this campus, for example, with nine megawatts of electricity which can run from solar? You can power not only the campus, but the internet. What am I telling you? Is that the university, the Opah Pemba University, don't need to invent water or bread. And they're doing a university of theirs. If an academy is selling electricity to the rule of the fair, it will get digital diversion also in Brazil. And we may happen now, we will turn the universities into research and productive centers. One of the things that have itself the most, do you know, intellectual property? When the research and inventors there, they're selling to companies and companies somehow give the university a lot of money. The endowment of Harvard University is bigger than our so-called foreign desire. Because they are selling grades there. They are not selling talent and grants. And that's what a university should be about. And who said, "How do we be realistic?" How do we be more realistic than this? Telling you, breaking it down to everybody's level, how to take Nigeria to the next level. Inspire people and moving them with all the best inspirations that is possible. So I will hand you one last thing. Because I've been told that I can answer all the questions, too many questions. And some of the questions, I think I've answered through other questions. And the issue of cannabis. Yes, I know some of you are very interested in cannabis. Yes, there is no intention of my class in what I said to legalize cannabis. What I have said, which will require some legal framework, is the export of cannabis to the rest of the world. And as of today, Canada legalized cannabis about two weeks ago. They are short of cannabis, seventy percent short of cannabis that they need. Nigeria's cannabis grown within a forest that is lined between Omo states, it is called Obese in Omo state, Kwaile, Ndeka state, Akiti state, and I think Edo state. They grow enough cannabis that will have supplied Canada for the rest of their life. So instead of burning cannabis, we burn one point five trillion naira worth of cannabis every year. Instead of burning it, selling it to the people who want it. Because cannabis is not the moral product that you are discussing anymore. It has become the new oil in the world. In fact, in Nigeria, they sell cannabis oil, they call it CBD. For just a bottle, it's twenty-six thousand naira. Yes, it kills all kinds of things. Most of them are in there, you know, they do that. Cannabis, they feed people up out there. But you know, the same people, the same people that are condemning cannabis, they smoke cannabis, pastors, judges, they all have cannabis and wash. We can find cannabis wherever we want in Nigeria. But nobody has thought of packaging it, and selling it, and making four billion dollars every year. If we can make four billion dollars every year from cannabis, Omo states, Akiti state, Edo state, and then that's the money to go to Abuja to beg for the monthly allowance that it's like a peanut. In fact, they will be able to invest it to make their countries, I mean their states, become independent of the federal government. Maybe from there, we can try to foster the restructuring that I have been talking about. Because knowing you have economic power, you can structure it the way you want. But if you are here Omo states, and all you have is electricity. Don't go to Korea. And nobody's thinking about how to grow the economy. You are not thinking about products. You are not using your universities to create products that can compete globally. And you are burning the cannabis. And sorry for you, you just need to hit Google and save yourself of ignorance and embarrassment. Les Allemans have also legalized cannabis. Ghana is reporting cannabis very soon. A lot of countries are after how to use cannabis for medicinal purposes. And Nigerian cannabis, by the way, is the best. New road, Vitality Cannabis Valley. The new road for the cannabis valley is called Cannabis Survivor. It is best in the world. If you are not careful, they will tell you that it's the worst because you don't get it again on time. Ladies and gentlemen, great people! Better than better! By that thing I'll say to you, for those of you who are asking for student union. Did you want student union to create and enforce it? When I was at the University of Lagos, the school authorities said they prosper the student union. We said, "That is your own grammar." We organized ourselves, took over the student union building, we operated from there. My car was Aluta 001. The Bychance Lost Car was UniLand 001. Even though the student union car was not as good as the Bychance Lost Car, to show to him that my student union used to park my car outside his car in front of the Senate building. And nobody there threw my car, even though sometimes I only have breaks. And sometimes just to embarrass them, I would bring the car when it has oil leakage problems. So it will leak oil, it runs, the Bychance Lost Office. And they will say to us, "Come and take your car," and say, "If you don't want the embarrassment, replace the car." So please, ladies and gentlemen, you are old enough to cover yourselves. Don't be begging school authorities for student union all the time. That is what's giving them the conflict. If they want the student union, organize yourself, organize the student union, organize the student union parliament. It won't be pressed unless somebody come and arrest you. You are the owners of this campus. The university professors and the directors are working for you. They are working for you, they are waiting for your right presence on campus. And I want to hear you say, "Stop calling it student union." So that they see we know they are small, what is student union? Thank you very much.
Thank you everybody. For the free card, free cards. I have three cards for everybody, I have about fifteen cards. So just sit down, we don't begin, um, spelling out the numbers. So come out with your phone, we have MTN, we have the cell, we have all the network. So be ready, so it's free, so just take one of them, just to update the lucky winners and everybody come for me. Thank you so much for coming for this program. I want about the mic to the X C and the whole moderator to take over guns. Last out of the round of nine, the president of the People's Union, Austin, was working on being a three-time Fadjo Chairman and a two-time presidential aspirant of this great school. Dr. Ibrahima Austin from the Gimp State, do you just recognize, what do I nice you recently have? Great, great, thank you, thank you, thank you. All T I D members from all the other cities, from Africa, from Malaysia, from Shoko, from Iran, what do I nice you, appreciate your presence. Thank you for coming, thank you so much. Okay, I have about the mic for the free cards that we spelled out, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, no reason, girl, are you ready now? She said she should take my card the other night. Okay, please, you can't subscribe, but I'll not go missing by. Three one nine seven nine seven five five two nine eight four five three seven two six. So who got it, who got it, who got it? Okay, I call again. Three one nine seven nine seven five five two nine eight four five three seven two six. MTN, who's the other one? Who are you, man? That brother? Okay, let me tell it one more time. Three one nine seven nine seven five five two eight. Okay, sounders, sounders, if you need, if you know this time, let us know. Now this is another one. MTN, I'm having another MTN with me, because they are coming to blow. Zero nine four four, please say it, zero nine four four, three one six eight, nine one five zero eight one three zero six. Show what I got. Sounders, sound is putting this thing. I'm like, now audience like, okay, Nalaka, who am I being? Nalaka, congratulations brother. Now I'm going to be calling Etela. I'm going to be calling Etela, this is a driver in here, are you ready? Etela's a driver in here. One one five seven three three four eight seven four seven four, nice to meet you. I'm getting it. You're so clever, you're amazing, you're amazing. One three, eight two zero, two six, two three, seven three, one four, five six. I'm getting it, seven three, eight two zero, two six, two three, seven three, one four, five six. Oh, sounders, everybody.
All right, give everybody next set of picture, oh yeah, give everybody next set of picture.
Four six, seven five, six seven, four three, seven four, five eight, five nine, seven. MTN, what are you? Thank you very much. How much are you? Thank you. Okay, I have a nice job here. You have a plenty, say that a lot. Stop, stop. One nine seven four, one one eight three. I tell you, one nine seven four, two two.
Oh, people, eh?
Yes.
Thank you everyone, thank you. Thank you, very great to you. Sure, man, thank you, man, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ah, fantastic, thank you so much, haven't seen you. Enjoy, man?
Eventually.
Raise the shenun now with the camera.
See it on camera, see it on camera.
All right, Dr. Ajila wants to, she has the floor, Dr. Ajila, she has the floor. Please, one house, this one house, Dr. Ajila, please.
Thank you very much. Great people.
Great.
Great, take it back, actually. What we are telling you?
Media team, please pray.
Yeah, good.
This is opinion, this is suggestion, please, listen. Okay, please, one house, one house, one house, one house. One house. We have a suggestion from our sister unit, Anaso, Sanu, Asu, Panua, Asu, and Tofor. We believe that we need to form a forum for meeting. On the continent, maybe there will be movement from across the country, maybe from the town, from the church, from many of the Arab, in order to talk to our parents. All those people are cursing our brothers in the intra-area, and mothers in the street. Now that we just finished this program today and we end it here, so we need to back it in. So we need to let it continue on the twenty nineteen, after the election. So that Byagha, yeah, continue registration. I don't know who is going to continue, the states, are you the state?
State chairman.
The state chairman, so maybe you're going to handle it, then you get it across to Asu, Sanu, all, all those people that are involved, then you're trying to. Hey, what I'm saying, what I'm racing here now, is this is, I mean, here is no problem. We give you promise over here, it's no problem, we give them letter, it's no problem, we're going to do it. It's the next few minutes, not it, on the next year.
Do we have a number?
You don't have my number.
They have a lot of vibrant voters here. It's a great synergy between the campus and the man. That's, that's very important, because we can't afford to.
Because we're already.
We can see from today, you know, like, if Buhari still came out of Ole conference. It's not a change, man, and we are forgiving him. Thank you, I wish so much for. Thank you, I wish so much for.
So that's a little session for you. Why is, why is the head of the, of the Ashwin?
Yeah, Mungo, yeah, Mungo.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, please.
Mungo, yeah, Mungo.
Okay, Ashwin. All right, Ashwin, 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 quick, quick, media departments, get ready. Or you can join me. Please, we'll take it in batches and just, we'll cook them food. I don't know where we will be. Ashwin, you join me, you join me. Ashwin, yeah, yeah. All right, media departments, media departments, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, Ashwin, please. Media department, please, please, media department, do quick, media department, where's John? Where's John? Ah, okay, oh, yeah, yeah, media department, please. Media department, do that quick, quick, quick. Any member of Asu, Nasu here? Okay, Alosi Committee, Alosi Committee, Alosi, Maonako, Alosi Committee. Alosi, where is Maon, where is this? The state of the world can join, Odukun may can join, um, the state experts can join. So, any other, any other that is not yet taking pictures, they just join. Any other comrades, other comrades, other comrades, other comrades, other comrades, here, from Oshoko. What's that?
We can watch this, we can.
Any other international leaders here?
Veterans, ah, veterans, ah.
What's that, what's that, come in, come in. Go inside, go inside. All right. Comrades from E D I, from Oshoko, from Irer, can you just find him? Other comrades that are not yet taking pictures, can you just come along? Anybody that have not taken pictures, you carry. Come on, oh, yeah, let's go, we like to quick, yeah, for me, yeah, for me. Yeah, for the other comrades, let's take a picture, let's take a picture. All right. Okay. All right, like quick, quick. Oh, yeah, I can, but every other person speaks, this is, so.
Sorry, sorry, wait, say wait, say wait. You have a nice old guy there, I'm not having your guys.
All right, let's do this, let's do this quick.
You're not supposed to be a veteran, yeah.
All right, my, okay.
No. Ask him a picture session. I want to go and check out it, represent it, yeah.
All right, that was it, that was it, that was it. Okay. All right. Lot of other in this, all right. Don't be, don't be. I don't want anybody, I don't want anybody, I don't want anybody, I don't want anybody.
Yeah, you find you, nah.
I need to, I want to be cool. Hey, because she's fine, don't need to. I like that.
Amala. He says, oh, sure.
Ladies and gentlemen, the scene is, is mannequin. She's still in the scene, it's not evident, the same people's face.
Excuse me, sorry.
All right.
You guys.